Updates, and I apologize for again being remote, but I have to, a meeting of the Fear 405 up in Norwalk again. So it's quicker for me to get there and not be late. So that's why I'm doing it from, from home, the home office. But anyway, I will start off the first selectmen's updates. We had a successful St. Patrick's Day parade, as you all know. It was fun marching with Lauren and Janet. Lots of the people, the office holders from around the state and candidates for state office came down and, and federal office. And almost every one of them remarked about how big our parade was and how good it was. And a couple even said it was bigger than the Hartford one and the New Haven one. And Stanford's was very short this year, I don't know why. So that's nice to hear that Greenwich set the standard for St. Patrick's Day parades. We always knew it was the best one, but this year seemed to confirm it. So it was good to see out, everybody out and about again. On March 26th, the Saturday, we're going to do the community cleanup. Tom McKinney, a local student, is running that. It's at from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Greenwich High School. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Mayor Simmons. We're going to try to do this on a regular basis. Yesterday was at Stanford City Hall. Next month, I'll be at Greenwich Town Hall. We talked about how we've already started working on two initiatives together, and we're looking at other ones going forward. So that's, it's exciting. We're friends and former colleagues in the State House. So it's nice to renew that friendship here on the, on the local level. I will also be meeting with Mayor Klein, newly elected in Rybrook. We're going to meet on Monday and to see how our two towns can work together as we share a board with, with Rybrook, too. Similar to what we do with Portchester already. So looking forward to that. The Greek flag raising will be tomorrow at 12:30 outside of Town Hall in front. So hopefully, if you're Greek or not Greek, hopefully you can join us. Two years ago, when we did it, that was really at the beginning of the pandemic, and it was just Karen Fast, Leotis and I out there. And last year was a lot of people, and this year it shows going to be even more. So we're looking forward to that. Saturday at 11 o'clock, there's also a grand opening. We're going to do a ruin cutting at 2:35 Sound Beach Avenue for Cups and Cones. The new owner, Anne, is looking forward to this. So if you're around on Saturday, please join us in, in Sound Beach. 12 o'clock on Sunday, I'm going to go say hello to Grace LaRusso, who's celebrating her 101st birthday in Pembroke. I remember last year stopping by there. Everybody's sitting outside Pembroke Road, and she had a great time. So we're looking forward to doing that again this Sunday. We are, we started our interviews for the Emergency Operations Director position. We have more coming in the, in the coming days, but we started yesterday. So hopefully you'll be hearing some good news with the selection in, in the very, very near future. The committee on, that I'm putting together on the Havmar Building, waiting for the final nominations from the BOE and the BET, two each, and then three citizens at large. And we'll come back with a series of recommendations on, and facts, as well as a, we're going to have a professionally titled, professionally titled search. There seems to be conflicting notions about what we can do with the building. So we're looking at, hopefully, a future new home for the Board of Ed and to reclaim that building and get it back into shape and make it something that we're really all proud of in the middle of our, our business district and our, and a historic district. So that's very exciting. So we're glad to, to get, be moving on that. We had had plans to do that two years ago, and then the pandemic shut that down. So we're, we're ready to get back and going at that. On April 6th, I'll be attending the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club's annual dinner for the Youth of the Year. Been going to that for many, many years. And this year is also going to be a special recognition of our friend, Don Palmer, who's been there, I think, for 30 years now. And I remember when Don first went there, came to the, to the club. And he's been a fixture there. People love him, and we hope he's there for another 30 years. So with, turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone. So just a couple of updates. I have been working with Katie DeLuca, Dan Carson, and Ben Branyan, sorry, Ben, on defining our municipal KPIs as they relate to the P O C D, Planning of Conservation and Development. And we had a pre-wire with the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday and got some positive feedback. We have to go back to the drawing board on a couple of items. And our next step will be to do that. And then we'll be coming in front of the Board of Selectmen and some of the RTM members that were originally part of this KPI initiative. So exciting to keep moving it forward and super thanks to the team that I'm working with. Janet, Fred and I have been attending the Citizens Police Academy. We've completed two sessions. It's been extremely informative information, and we look forward to continuing with the academy. We talked during the last Board of Selectmen meeting that we are looking for candidates for Central Middle School Building Committee and to use the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee process. It's on the town website. So if people are interested, if they can submit their forms, we haven't received any since we talked about it during the last meeting. And I think I mentioned this building committee will be quite different because we will not be doing feasibility first. So we'll be looking for some very specific skill sets as we, as the Board of Selectmen nominates that committee. The last, actually, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. And then over to Janet. Morning, Janet.
Good morning. Thank you, Fred. Tonight at 6 o'clock, the Greenwich Historical Society will present its Witness Stone Program on the history of enslavement at the Bush Holly House. To register for this virtual event, please go to greenwichhistory.org. And I'm looking forward to attending the Greenwich High School's 35th Essentially Ellington Jazz Festival this Saturday. Having once served as the Band Booster Co-President, I might be biased, but if you enjoy jazz, you won't be disappointed. The public is welcome to drop by and support this fabulous Greenwich tradition. Adult tickets are $10 and student tickets are $5. On Tuesday, I'm looking forward to helping out with Fred and Lauren with the final drive-through meal distribution at the Senior Center. Since August 2020, the Senior Center has distributed 8,300 drive-through meals to its members. Starting April 1st, the program will transition to indoor pickup. So thank you, Senior Center. Backed by popular demand, on Wednesday, April 6th, at 7:00 on Zoom, the League of Women Voters of Greenwich will present a community case discussion with Harvard Business School Professor David Moss, titled "James Madison, the Federal Negative and the Making of the U.S. Constitution." To register, please go to l w v greenwich.org. And finally, we are approaching the Board of Estimate and Taxation's vote on the town budget on March 31st. Thank you to all who are involved. The budget is a huge undertaking. There will be time for public comment on Monday, March 28th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in person in this room, the Town Hall Meeting Room. And I'm going to join the course that I hope that members of the public will be able to make their comments also by Zoom. Right now, members of the public can view the meeting by Zoom, but not participate. And that's all for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Janet. Okay. Next up is our old business, and we only have one item there, and that's an amendment to the traffic ordinance regarding parking on Talbot Lane. And we have Deputy Chief Gray, Deputy Chief Craig Gray, and our Senior Civil Engineer, Gabriella Cohit. Good morning, Chief and Gabriella. Good to see you.
Morning.
Chief, we had this two weeks ago, and I, we asked for some citizen feedback from the residents there. And my friend Billy Martin, not the manager, but Billy Martin, who lives on Talbot Lane, called me. And from what I understand, I asked if I can get something in writing because I was kind of following what he said, that they were okay with most of this, but they were requesting some, there was like four spots that are used a lot by people who don't live there. And so I asked for something in writing, and he said he sent it, and apparently it was sent to DPW. I have not seen it. So if anybody has that, what Billy was referring to, because I, it was just hard to, I know the street very, very well, but it was, it was a couple of things going on there. He seemed to be in favor of, of this, but had some other concerns. I don't know if you've seen that.
Well, no, I have not actually seen that one. I don't know. Gabriella, did you get a copy of that one in particular?
No, we did not receive anything here that I know of.
Okay. Thank you. So First Selectmen, we did get one response. It was not from that gentleman. It was from a resident at 33 Talbot Lane. Excuse me. Basically, it's the same thing. They're in favor of all the changes. There was just one little nuance. They wanted an additional parking sign located, and particularly in one location, which I'm sure, you know, once we send it over to signs and lines, that they'll put them in the appropriate location where they need to be. And if there's a minor adjustment or an additional sign, that's not much. I can't speak to the concerns that Mr. Martin brought forward, but if he's in favor of the project, I see no reason why we can't move forward. And I'm sure we can work out whatever his issues may be.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that some of his concerns was signage. And I think that's probably with, I think you probably spoke with Bob at the end of the road there. So I'm, I think we're okay here. Certainly for, for business up and all here from Billy, but I think we're... I'm sorry?
That's fine. The, we'll get his information. He can forward it to us, signs and lines, and look it over. And, you know, once they get out there and actually start lining it up, you know, in the field, there may be some slight adjustments compared to what was placed on the, the map by Gabriella. But that's just, you know, it's the nature of the layout and the environment. So I don't see it being an issue, and I'm sure to be satisfactory to Mr. Martin. But we will address it.
Thanks so much. I'm just seeing if I can pass along his information to you. Should have it somewhere, but if not, I'll, I'll get it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any, any questions for Chief or Gabriella?
I think that we have some residents from Talbot Lane in the audience.
Great. If they can come up to the podium and state their name, that would be great.
I think this is on. Yes, my name is Anne Blumensot. I have lived on Talbot Lane since October 1984, the grand dame of the street. I did receive the package originally in January, whenever you sent it out. But like so many other people, I stuck it in a drawer and forgot about it and realized I had missed the opportunity to speak to the issue. So I'm, thank you for this opportunity today. When I looked at the map and saw that there would be no parking on the north side, I think that makes sense. Now, on the south side, where I live, at Fort Talbot Lane, my understanding is from in front of my house, all the way down to 38 Talbot Lane on the south side, parking will be prohibited. I make the following observation. I walk every day on a regular basis. As I go down the street, I see many residents, long-term residents, who park on the south side of the street. They've done that for many years, and I suspect, whatever the outcome is, they probably will continue to do so. That compliance may not be 100%, not because we're a street of scofflaws, but because of this precedent. And especially parcel number 10 is a multifamily, multi-generational household where the 20-something millennial parks their car in front of that house every day because the parents park in the two allotted spots in the little driveway. And at 38, I see many cars parked there on a daily basis. I do not know if they are residents or owners or residents of that household. I do, I do not know that. But the other people who park on the street on a regular basis have lived on the street a long time and have always parked there. So, and also, since I'm at the end of a dead end, I am not sure how no parking at that very end is necessary. The other question that you have to consider is, a small street with limited parking, when people have house guests, not multiple house guests, but if you have a visitor, the likelihood is 100% they will park on the south side of the street. I'm not saying these issues aren't, the parking issues are of concern because it's a small street with limited space. But I just wanted you to be aware of these concerns that maybe a more limited possibility could be considered. And I will find out about the space in front of my house. So if I have a visitor, are they allowed to park there on a limited basis or not? Because I'm at the end of a dead-end street, as well as the neighbor across the street. So thank you for affording me this opportunity.
Thank you, Leanne. And I'll turn it over to the Chief to see if he can address your questions.
I think Gabriella, it's probably best to answer the question. It's really boiling down to national standards.
Yes. So, so basically, the recommendations and the report were based on our highway standards and sizing for roadways and, and access, mostly for safety and for fire truck access. Obviously, if the roadway isn't wide enough and you have, you add parking, then fire trucks can't pass through and access in an emergency, as well as other emergency vehicles. So that is the main concern. If and when we do, do post, right now, the, the signs conflict with the, the ordinance. So enforcement is an issue because they obviously can't ticket someone if, you know, the sign says one thing and the ordinance says another. So what we're doing here is we're just trying to make everything consistent, the signs and the ordinance, as well as address the public safety issue and emergency access. We understand it is a very narrow road. Everyone on the street does have a driveway. If and when people do have visitors, you do have the additional parking towards the intersection of Byram Road, and accommodations would, would have to be made in that case.
Thanks, Gabriella. Yeah, and I certainly acknowledge that a lot of the streets just don't have the parking. And certainly, if this is to be in compliance with our codes, I think it's something that has to be done. But certainly, Anne and Bob, we can, you know, if you have any other questions about overflow parking or things like that, we can certainly work, do our best to work with you on that. But if I'm hearing Gabriella and the Chief correctly, I think this is something that has to be done so that we're in compliance with our code and so that emergency vehicles can actually get there in case, God forbid, there's an emergency. Is there anybody else from Talbot Lane in the audience?
I think Anne would like to say something else.
Sure.
How would a compliance be achieved? Is this on a regular basis, that the street would be patrolled or observed? I'm just curious to know. Thank you.
There's no changes to the enforcement schedule. It's just that, you know, as needed, if there's a complaint made, if the officer notices a violation, they will enforce it. So it's just going to be typical enforcement activities that we do across all of Greenwich.
Okay. Thanks, Chief, and thanks, Anne, for the follow-up question.
Another speaker, Fred.
Okay. They can, it's Bob.
At the very, Robert, Jenna, I'm at Fort Talbot Lane as well. And at the very beginning of Talbot Lane, where Byram Road is, there are parking spots for four vehicles. Now, when you approach Byram Road, you have to yield to those cars. And so you're basically on the left side of those vehicles. So the street is already very narrow. So as cars are coming in to try to get to Talbot Lane, it's a very tight squeeze to have two vehicles, one going to Byram, the other one coming onto Talbot. So those cars do, they do create an impedance to the flow of traffic at that beginning, beginning of the street. I think that that should be considered, you know, when you allow cars to park there. And also, it might also restrict access to emergency vehicles as well. But it's just something to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing any questions or comments from the Board?
Not from me. Thank you for all the input. It's really helpful when we're making these decisions.
Thank you, Janet. Okay. This is a second read, so certainly, a respect for the work and that was been put into this by Gabriella and, you know, the Department, and certainly Chief Gray and GPD. And also out of caution and consideration for the public safety aspect, namely specifically, emergency vehicles going down that road. Is there a motion to, is there a motion on the floor?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the amendment to the traffic ordinance regarding parking on Talbot Lane.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo as a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chief, and thank you, Gabriella, and thank you, Anne and Bob. And if you have any concerns going forward or anything you need us to, to look at, just don't hesitate to, to reach out. With that, we're going to go into new business, and we have a proposed lease, an MI, for the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club's proposal to be across the street at One Horse Neck Lane in the Horse Neck Parking Lot. And with that, we have our COO and Town Administrator, Ben Branyan, with us. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm also joined today with the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich, Christina Vittoria. She can speak to it as well. I was looking through my notes. This is the fifth time I've presented a lease on One Horse Neck Lane in front of the Board of Selectmen. I do more than just this, but I just wanted to make that point that, as we know, Neighbor to Neighbor has, currently have an active lease, the same process regardless who's using it. This is a first read, so we're not looking for action today. But the lease is, as the First Selectmen mentioned, they would like to go across the street during their renovation. The lease in front of you is a start date of September 1, 2022, which aligns with the expiration date. If Neighbor to Neighbor chooses to extend their existing lease, which the RTM recently approved through August 31st of 2022. This will start on September 1 with an end date of September 30th, 2024. Similar terms are, as Neighbor to Neighbor had is in the lease in front of you. One point of information is in the memo. I mentioned that we, we have a, the risk manager has approved the insurance. I was optimistic on, on that bullet point. We're still working through the form, but there's, there's no issue. It's simply just paperwork at this point. Just to point out the meeting dates, this is a first read. The second read will hopefully be in April. If you choose to move this forward, it will then be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in May with the RTM submission, end of May with hopefully RTM action in June. And the one major change in front of you from the previous memos is we did put in the history of the Horse Neck Lot. So you do see that the lot has been construct, it's been out of use for parking for now over a decade. So January of 2012 is when we first started this. And the last point I'll make is P and Z has the ultimate authority on the, on the MI. And last time we presented the, the Neighbor to Neighbor, there was some concerns about what's the definition of temporary? When initially that facility was built, it was a temporary. And here we are, a decade later. But certainly, answer any questions? And certainly, if Christina has any comments she'd like to make.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, the only thing was the comment on the temporary. So yeah, we, I got a giggle anyway when I said, okay, another lease. So we'll have to just see how temporary it is.
And I'm, I'm looking forward to what Christina has to say. I want to say, of course, thank you for everything that Boys and Girls Club contributes to Greenwich. I absolutely want to support its work. I'm, I'm going to ask similar, a similar line of questioning, which is, I understand that the facility is coming towards the end of its expected life. And so just for transparency's sake, you know, I will ask if there's any anticipated maintenance or repair costs, you know, that's, that's not otherwise usual to a building on that site.
It's a good question. Routine only. Nothing is anticipated, but routine only.
Okay. Is Christina going to say a few words? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I am Christina Vittoria, the CEO of the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club. We are applying to lease the, the One Horse Neck Lane property as we look to renovate our clubhouse in the beginning to the middle of 2023. This would, we will vacate the entire building at our Four Horse Neck Lane and are looking to use the One Horse Neck Lane for administrative offices as well as storage. This will be a very critical piece of our renovation to be able to house our entire administrative team as we, as we look to continue and not disrupt our operations. So we ask that you consider this, you know, seriously. And we ask that, hopefully, we can make this happen. Do you have any questions?
I'm just interested. So where, where will you be moving your activities?
So that is something that we're currently investigating. We've been in talks with a few different locations around town, and we're still exploring those opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. And yeah, I'll just, I know it's a first read, but I still, you know, just echo what my colleagues have said, that we know that people look at the temporary, the word temporary, and say, well, that's ridiculous. But I would add that, thank God, we have this. This has really come in handy for fire services, for Neighbor to Neighbor, and now hopefully, the Boys and Girls Club. So while we know it's not permanent, we certainly, you know, it really got us out of a couple jams. So we certainly hear the other side of that, too. So thank you. Thanks, Ben, and thanks, Christina. All right. Going on to our next item under new business is Neighbor to Neighbor's request to allow the Greenwich Town Party to use the Horse Neck Lane facility, May 27th and May 28th. And we have the Executive Director, Margaret Goldberg, with us. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Margaret Goldberg, the Executive Director of Neighbor to Neighbor, very proudly. I appreciate this opportunity this morning to speak with you and in consideration of a request put forth by Mr. Scott Wyker. I do see Scott on my monitor here. The event manager for the Greenwich Town Party, which is to be held Saturday, May 28th. I believe everybody has some background information on this. Scott has asked if his organization might have use and access to the Horse Neck facility to support their town efforts. This would include the use of restroom facilities, as well as the use of the kitchen as needed. We will not be, just to mention full disclosure, we will not be receiving any payment for use of the facility. And I'll certainly turn it over to Scott if there's any additional details that he'd like to share with this request.
Sure. First Selectman Camillo, nice to see you.
Nice, Scott.
Selectwoman Raven, nice to see you. And Selectperson McWiggin, nice to see you. Margaret, always a pleasure to see you. So with GTP coming up, parking is always a key element of the event. I saw Christina from Boys and Girls Club earlier, and Christina's been amazing to work with as far as allowing us to use the Boys and Girls Club for town, stage, artist, parking and check-in. And, and then I went to Margaret to ask for her assistance with parking in that Neighbor to Neighbor area. And Margaret, with open arms, said, you know, I'd love to help, but obviously, we need to have this approved by Ben Branyan and the First Selectmen and Selectwoman and Selectperson. and Selectwoman and Selectperson for full transparency. And we would simply use it for parking from... It may start on May 27, Friday, but I think primarily it'll be just the day of May 28, the day of the event. So I come and respectfully request that you approve this request by Margaret.
Hey, Scott. It was good to see you. And I'm certainly fine with this and happy to see that Neighbor to Neighbor and GTP has been talking. And, you know, subject to my colleagues' comments and questions, we'll move on this.
No questions?
Okay, Janet?
I just always like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Neighbor to Neighbor and thank you Greenwich Town Party for all you contribute to this town. And I know Greenwich Town Party is well-disposed of green practices, but I'm still going to take the opportunity to say in advance, thank you for role modeling and showing us what a sustainable event can look like. So thank you.
Thank you, Selectperson.
Well, thank you. So I know this is a first read, but I'm okay with... I don't see any opposition at all with this. So if okay with my colleagues, I'd be willing to vote on this right now. So having said that, is there a motion?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Neighbor to Neighbor request to allow Greenwich Town Party to use the Horse Neck Lane facility, May 27 and May 28.
I'm comfortable because we've done this in the past. So this is not a new practice, so I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo is a yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. Margaret and Scott, thanks so much. Good to see you, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate this so much. Thank you. Have a good time.
Wonderful day. Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a naming rights policy. And we have our senior management analyst, policy analyst, Dan Carson, with us. Carson, sorry. Lopped off one of your letters there. Good morning, Dan.
I think I did that.
Oh, here we go now. All right, we got this going. So as I'm sure everybody is well aware, establishing a naming rights policy has been a long-discussed topic of conversation in Greenwich. You know, there's been a history of community-driven individuals and organizations providing charitable donations to the town. And often, the topic of recognizing the name of the donor has been brought up, but it's really never been formalized. So the purpose of this naming rights policy before you today is to establish the criteria and the procedures to be used for the granting and naming rights for town-owned properties and facilities. Just like the last one, this is a first read, so no action is needed to be taken at this time. In terms of the scope, this will apply to town-owned property and buildings, excluding the library and the Board of Education. Specifically, this policy includes buildings as well as the components within the buildings, such as gyms and meeting rooms. They also have real property, which encompasses open spaces, parks, recreation facilities such as tennis courts and pickleball courts. This will also encompass honorary street names. And by honorary street names, we don't mean the official renaming of the street, rather some sort of commemorative placard or something like that. There is a petition for official street name changes under a separate policy. And to avoid confusion, we link that petition under the related policies at the end of this document. The other related policies that remained outside the scope of this policy is the BOE naming rights policy, Memorial Commemorative Bench Program, which you would contact the Parks and Recreation, and then Tree Memorials. And you would contact the Greenwich Tree Conservancy for that. In terms of protocol, the proposals would be submitted to the Office of the First Selectman. Each proposal will undergo administrative review to make sure it fits within the scope of the policy, and then it will be presented for the Board of Selectmen for consideration. It's important to note that proposals for naming rights must be presented at two regularly Board of Selectmen meetings to give the public a chance to weigh in on the subject. Finally, any gift or contribution associated with the request for naming rights must be approved by the RTM. So in terms of criteria, naming rights proposals will be evaluated and considered with the needs and preferences of the community. And there's two types of naming rights. The naming rights for gifts and contributions and the naming rights in recognition. So the naming rights for gifts and contribution may be granted based on the named party providing a significant funding contribution, sponsorship, or other commercial transaction. And those would be things like sponsorships, grants, provisions to buy equipment, materials, land, or services. The policy does state that the Board of Selectmen will solicit advice from professional valuation services to provide valuation of naming rights. And this is to ensure each naming rights agreement is handled in a fair and equitable manner. Now, the other naming rights would be naming rights in recognition. And this is granted to an individual, group, or organization that has provided a significant contribution to the town. A written agreement would be established between the naming rights party and the Board of Selectmen just to make sure each side understands the nature of the agreement. And then outside of historical figures, the town will be required to get written consent from the party or the representatives. Officially named buildings are eligible to be renamed after 15 years unless stipulated in the agreement. And then finally, the policy does identify items that would qualify for terminations of the naming rights, such as defaulting on payment or adverse impacts on the town, image, or public trust of the town. That's a summary of the policy, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Dan. I really want to thank you for all the work you put into this. Like the Blight Ordinance that Lauren and I had spoke about in 2019 a lot, this is... We basically ran for office on public-private partnerships as one of our main components of our... Pieces of our platform, and we've been doing a lot of that. And each time we would do some, you know, a big ticket item, this would come up. It comes up in debates. It came up in the 2019 race. It came up this year in 2021. And it makes sense, really, to have a policy that provides a lot of clarity. And I think you've hit on every single possibility that would exist with a naming or renaming of a building or a street. We've run into this before. When I did the... I was in the RTM, this is 20-something years ago, when Griff Harris, former First Selectman, passed away. I submitted a proposal to change the name of the Griff Golf Course, of the... The former Bruce Memorial Golf Course. And immediately, people said, well, why would you rip somebody's name off of there and replace it with someone else? And so I did some research and found out the reason in that case was that the money was put in a fund called the Bruce Fund that we got from the state of Connecticut when they took I-95 and went through Bruce Park. And so that particular... And Griff Harris was a First Selectman, used that money to purchase the land for the golf course. And it made sense to people that... And a lot of things had the Bruce name on it. So in that case, people were fine with it, but there was no policy. And so it was always in the back of everybody's mind, including my own back then, that you don't want to ever take things off of, you know, rip somebody's name off of something that, you know, just because there was a... Somebody more recent that did something. So this really would clarify a lot of things. And I think this is... Would certainly limit debates for future public-private partnerships to the merits of those particular opportunities, naming opportunities, and not have to get sidetracked into about a policy and why should we should have a policy. So this is very much needed. And so we'll wait a few weeks and see what the public weighs in on it. But I can't thank you enough for really putting in a lot of time and also Ben, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to thank you, too, Dan. I think it's very thorough. You can definitely tell that you put a lot of thought into describing all the different scenarios and what could be. So it seems to be airtight. So thank you.
Thank you. And a special thanks to Ben and Amena, as well as the departments. They really provided some clarity as well to help round this out.
So I'm going to echo. This is much needed, and thank you very much. I know that a lot of work has gone into it. I like what I see, but I also... I wonder, I would have expected some of the criterion to be a little bit more elaborated. For instance, is there a threshold to a gift? That's just an example that comes immediately to mind. I don't want to anticipate what the public input might be, but that's kind of a big one, I think. The other, again, I don't want to anticipate. But you did mention that this is going to have to be approved by the RTM. And it does strike me that the RTM may very well want this policy to kind of mirror the gift policy, which is that the RTM also has a say in it. So again, I don't want to anticipate, but that's something that I'm going to assume is going to happen.
Yeah, I do want to say that we did implement this policy with the idea that once the Board of Selectmen went through their review and approval process, it would go to the RTM for their version of it. So if they had any specific, you know, things they wanted to bring up about any such agreement, it would go through the RTM for ultimate approval. With your other comments, we can certainly look into adding that in there. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Janet, what was your first concern? I didn't quite get it.
Just... I'm looking through the draft, and, you know, the criteria isn't that specific. And my example is for a gift, you know, it's a big deal to have something named after someone in Greenwich. And, you know, we have precedent. We have Benny Park. We have Bruce Park. Those gifts, though, were given in their entirety from the honorary. And so it just... It strikes me, and I anticipate that there might be public questions of, do we want to set a threshold for a gift to result in naming the naming honor?
Thank you. Yeah, I would be a little hesitant with that because it's hard to say, you know, we just got a gift last year that was double what we've gotten ever for a public building. And, you know, you may request for somebody for X, and they may come back with Y, and Y is still really good. And I don't know if putting something in writing a hard, you know, a percentage or whatever may scare off people. I think the flex... Having the flexibility there would help the town get more public-private partnerships and certainly, you know, give taxpayers a break for some of these buildings that otherwise are going to have to fall completely, 100% on backs of the taxpayers, which in many cases it has. So it's just, you know, I think a little bit of room for flexibility would be welcome. But again, you know, as Dan said, we're... This will go to the RTM, and I'm sure they'll have lots of ideas for it. So your points are heard, so I appreciate it. And again, we'll wait and see what we hear back in the next two weeks. So again, thanks, Dan. Thanks, Ben, and certainly thanks to Planning and Zoning. Okay. Next up, we have our good friend, George Logan of the Aquarian Water Company, with the Water Conservation Plan for 2022. And I think George, oh, he's there in person. Good morning, George.
Good morning. Good to see everyone. Glad to be here. I want to thank you, First Selectman Fred Camillo and Selectwoman Laura Raven and Selectperson Janet Stone-McWiggin for allowing me to talk about water and conservation. I also just want to give a quick thank to Executive Assistant Barbara Hines and Jenny Larkin for assisting me with the submittal and with the technology here. That's important as well. Conservation. You know, as abundant as the clean water flowing from your tap may seem to be, it's a finite resource and one too precious for anyone to waste. Over time, society's need for water will only grow as our finite supplies are called upon to serve as many people as possible. Of course, wasting water also means wasting money. And when you conserve water, you can also reduce your water bill, cut your hot water heating expenses. And depending where you live, you can control municipal sewer system costs or extend the life of your septic system. Aquarian believes in taking a proactive approach towards conserving and enhancing natural resources. We recognize that environmental protection and efficient use of resources are vital for the success, for continuing our success, because they enable us to continue providing valuable service to our customers and community. Aquarian is committed to providing our Greenwich customers with safe, high-quality water and excellent customer service. And again, I'm George Logan, the Director of Community Relations for Aquarian Water Company. So I submitted and packaged an agenda. I'm not sure if you have those in front of you, but on the second slide is the agenda, and I will keep it relatively brief here. But I will chat about... Touch upon the sources of supply for Greenwich. Where is this water, this wonderful water that you're drinking? Where's it coming from? I'll chat a little bit about the water distribution system, reservoir levels and the importance of having a healthy supply of water. I'll touch upon the effects of climate change. The real key for me being here is Item 5, Water Conservation. I'm going to chat a little bit about the twice-weekly watering for irrigation that we're asking all residents to and customers to abide by. And then I'll chat a little about system maintenance and repair. So on Slide 3 of the presentation, sources of supply. Many may be surprised to know where and from far and wide the water comes from that comes to your tap. If you're in northern part of Greenwich, you may be familiar with the Putnam Reservoir. We have our water treatment plant there. This north of that is the Rockwood Reservoir. But also over in Stanford, there's the Barge Reservoir that feeds directly into Greenwich. We also, off the Mayanis River, we pull... We have a water treatment plant off the Mayanis River. And also in Stanford, water does come from the Stanford system as well. Our Laurel Reservoir and our Mill River Reservoir, Stanford, North Stanford Reservoir, Siskiit, Trinity. And in addition to all that, we also have a regional pipeline where water comes also all the way from our Greater Bridgeport system. So it's kind of a regional system where we're all working together to meet our water supply needs. On Slide 4 of the presentation, it's a look at current reservoir levels, at least as of the date that I handed in this presentation. So on March 8, if you look at the graph that's provided, there are a number of lines here. One shows a 20-year average, and one particular line shows the current actual reservoir level. So on March 8, we are at 93.4% for the Greenwich system reservoirs. The total usable storage is 3.16 billion gallons of water. And we are at over 93%. And as you can see, it's raining today. The reservoir level is rising, and that's great. Great news. What we want to do, if you go to Page 5 of the presentation, we want to avoid outdoor water bans. Back in 2016, if you all recall, we had a drought. It was a scary time. We actually had to... Aquarian had to, with permission from our regulators from the state, install a very expensive, above-ground, temporary line. And if you commute along the Merritt Parkway, you may have seen that. And we all had to get together, and government officials were involved to make that happen. So I talk about us being above 93% capacity for our reservoirs now. But back in November/December time period of 2016, we were down to less than 40%. And at that time, we had no idea what was going to happen in the months to come. So on Slide 6, now I'm going to chat a little bit about the effects of climate change. Folks are asking, why is this happening, right? We're seeing increased frequency of heavy rainstorms. We're seeing a frequency of these flash droughts, increased soil erosion, nutrient loading of reservoirs, increased turbidity, algae growth, taste and odor issues associated with that, increased treatment costs. All of that comes to play and is affected by climate change. On Slide 7, I give a couple examples of across New England. These are actually other service areas within Connecticut that we serve. And in Groton, you can see it's an example of flash flooding showing a car trying to go through an underpass, and water's up to the top of the wheel well. In Stonington, you can see a reservoir there that is usually full, but it... During the drought of 2016, it came down to a trickle. If you go to Slide 8, across New England, the northeast is becoming a hotspot for record floods and heavy rainfalls. Noticeable trends. We're actually able to quantify this and... Noticeable trends, we're actually able to quantify this and monitor this, and we can see that it's only increasing, so we need to be aware of that. Slide nine, the effects of climate change on storm events. More frequent storm intensities, right, increased coastal erosion, increased road salt use also affects our aquifers and our water supply. Increased operational costs, and I know the town is very familiar with that in terms of storm damage, snow removal, emergency overtime, et cetera. Although we were very fortunate this winter, I think we had a pretty, I'd say, mild winter overall. On Slide 10, I call this my, my, for my mother's slide. So on Slide 10, in 2016, again, I'm also an engineer, and in 2016, I was working in the engineering department, Director of Engineering, I'm sorry, Director of Environmental Management, prior to that I was Director of Engineering. And I went out to one of our reservoirs, Barge Reservoir, and it was a lovely June day. And the weather, the sky was blue, reservoir was full, and I said, you know, my, at that time, I think my mother was about 80 years old, I said, let me take a picture, because my mom would love to see her son in a tie, you know, out there at engineering. So I took a picture, and beautiful. Then that same year, in December of 2016, look at the shot, if you have the presentation in front of you, to the right there, all of a sudden, all of that water was gone. The rains just stopped, and we were pulling water, we weren't, you know, refilling, refreshing our watershed and our reservoirs. And we were in a very precarious situation there. And again, we're looking at reservoirs full in the spring, empty in the fall. Rare, but again, these short droughts are happening more, more often. So now, on page 11, I say all that for my sort of crescendo here, why I'm here, is, you know, we hit a third drought trigger in 2020, we had a mandatory irrigation ban in effect in multiple towns. We don't want to go there. So on page 12, in Greenwich, and in other towns, Greenwich, Dariann, Fairfield, Mystic, New Canaan, Newtown, Simsbury, Stanford, and Westport, so you're not alone on this, we have a mandatory twice-weekly watering for irrigation, right? And so you'll be hearing more about that, so I don't want you to be surprised by it. And the way we're going to work it out is that if the address on your home, even numbers, you know, 02468, water only on Sundays and Wednesdays before 10:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m., right, outside of the sort of peak usage times. And if you have an odd number on your home or business, Saturdays and Tuesdays, again, before 10:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m. And if you have no address on your home, we've got that covered, too. You could water on Sundays and Wednesdays before 10:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m. And that takes, goes to effect on April 1st. On Slide 13, just really quickly, in terms of sustainability and good water quality, system maintenance and repair, just FYI, we do flush our pipes, we're on a five-year cycle locally, in local areas, we may flush more frequently to keep the particulates out of the water as best as we can. Hydrant maintenance are on a three-year cycle. Our water storage tank rehabilitation, on the front pages of this presentation, shows the Putnam Tank there. Pump station improvements in a 15- to 25-year cycle. You know, I started at Aquarian in May of 1992 as a junior engineer. And I tell you, I remember when I started off in the early 90s, there were all these older guys, you know, and they would talk about, you know, when I, when I built this pump station, or when I, and now, the facilities that I helped to either improve or modify or build, now the new young crop, I'm 53 years old, the new crop of engineers are now renovating those same pump stations and treatment plants that I worked so hard to renovate and build so many years ago. Also, water treatment plan improvements are, seem to be ongoing. Technology changes, the water treatment plants are of vital importance, water quality changes as well as far as standards. Page 14, water quality testing and reporting on Aquarian's website, www.aquarianwater.com. We have our water quality report, and hot off the presses, just within the last couple of weeks, we posted, published our 2021 results. And we test over 100 compounds, and we list the 18 where we have actual detection in terms of those various compounds. But happy to say that we are within limits on all of those different parameters. Also, would like to point out that we also test compounds and elements that are not required. So we have federal requirements, state requirements, but for example, we test things like manganese, also PFAS is also a big deal, you hear that around, and the state has a recommended level, maximum level of 70 parts per trillion. And we are, in Greenwich, down at around, on page nine of the report, which I also handed out as a supplemental, we're around less than 10, you know, around four or five. So we're in good shape as far as PFAS. So I just want to conclude with, please remember to go to AquarianWater.com, lots of great information there. Keep in mind that again, for supporting the environment, we have, we like to be proactive, we have a rain barrel program where you can purchase a rain barrel, you have up until May 6 to do that, and we will have a spot in Greenwich to deliver those, again, AquarianWater.com. We also have, it's called an Environmental Champions Award, where we look at nonprofit organizations throughout our communities that are doing good things for the environment. So if you work or know of a nonprofit organization that you think deserves the recognition, let us know, there's a grant that's associated with it, again, at AquarianWater.com. Also, we have a, and I cheer this, is our contributions or our small grants request committee for nonprofit organizations. They could apply online, again, AquarianWater.com at the bottom of the homepage, and we generally give small grants generally less than $1,000. So all that's there for you. So again, thank you for the opportunity to talk conservation and talk water, and I look forward to seeing you all again in the future. And First Selectman Camilo, thank you, and apologies for showing you my back during this whole presentation.
Fred, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Good to see you, as always, my friend. I apologize for not being there in person, but the, this was very thorough, George, and glad to see that we're doing really well here as far as capacity. Love your outreach to the communities, and I certainly will get this, some of this information, especially things like the rain barrels, into our weekly eBlast to the people of Greenwich to get that word out there so they can have, before May 6, to get their rain barrels. But all good stuff, and appreciate your coming down.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity, much appreciated.
Yeah, and thank you as well. And Fred, we might want to include some of the stuff on page 10 of the, of the water quality report. And interestingly enough, our KPIs, and Aquarian has been very helpful, we have a KPI on water usage. And we've broken it out by residential, commercial, and town-owned facilities. Unfortunately, year over year, our residential is going up, so that's exactly what we want to know in a KPI. Are we doing better, are we doing worse, and then how do we, you know, mitigate? So it'll be interesting to work with Aquarian on things like page 10, and not just the, you know, watering your lawn, the irrigation twice a week. I think we probably have to do more and do better.
Absolutely agree. And I would say that KPI and tracking it is very helpful. And I don't, it's not all gloom and doom, folks are trying, and we are seeing a change and a difference. But we all know, more and more irrigation systems are being installed, and so we have to be vigilant and stay on top of that. So thank you for pointing that out.
And I'm just going to echo, and in full disclosure, I have a civil engineering degree and a background in environmental economics, and we're about, we're the same cohort. So thank, thank you very much, I appreciate everything you are saying. It's too bad that we can't employ what we call discriminatory pricing, that we could somehow charge more for people watering their lawns than we do for drinking water and bathing, but we can't, so this ban is very important. I did reach out to, I co-chaired the Sustainability Committee in Greenwich, I did reach out. And again, it was, it was emphasized that public education is just really, really important, that we, that we make sure that people are aware of the ban and why it's so important. And I'm also going to just say, I did note with interest that the systems are flushed out periodically, that's really important. And again, that kind of information, it's really important that neighborhoods know, because as we know, that, you know, after, after a flushing, your, your water will, the turbidity will increase, and we know that waterborne illness increases after that kind of a operation. So the more we can inform our, our town, the better. Thank you.
Super. Thanks again, really appreciate the opportunity. See you around.
Okay, thanks, George. Okay, and yes, Lauren, I will, we'll get a lot of that stuff into the eBlast this week. It's important information for everybody.
Fred, we have a member of the audience that would like to speak.
Sure, if they can come up to the podium and identify themselves.
Good morning. My name is Sam Romeo, resident of Greenwich, North Mayanis. I'm very happy to see that the Aquarian is here this morning talking about conservation and one of our most precious resources here in the town. However, we're, I'd like to know if, if there's any plans on increasing our capacity in the reservoirs that we have, especially during times of drought, and is there any plans on dredging the Mayanis River above the North Mayanis Filter Plant? I remember many, many years ago, that river there feeding the filter plant was about 40, 40 feet deep, and it, now you have trees growing out of the center of it. So I'm just wondering if there's any future plans for that. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that, right now, the town of Greenwich is really under assault with developments. It's 830G is a, is a major mitigating factor in our use of water, with the several hundreds of proposed units that are presently on our planning and zoning agenda to be built here in town. Is the water company involved in, in making recommendations to the town on how we're going to mitigate all these brand-new units of housing, because we're going to be using millions of gallons of water a day, more than we're using right now, with the new state statute that's being enforced here on all the municipalities in the state of Connecticut, and most recently the new one, the 55924, which includes the Transit District. So there's going to be a tremendous amount of billing in the name of affordable housing, but in essence, we have to see what's sustainable here in town. And I hope that the water company and all of the, even the power companies get involved in looking at our sustainability here. So I hope that comes into play. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. And George came back in the room, can maybe answer the questions that you have specifically for Aquarian. It was about increasing capacity in the reservoirs as well as dredging. And then, Sam, about the impact of development on our natural resources, one of the things that came out when we did an initial review of the KPIs with planning and zoning is having some of that data that actually indicates the impact of, you know, increased development, such as, you know, water usage. So I think everyone's on the same page there.
Yes, absolutely. And that is why the importance, again, of water conservation, it's so important, because imagine, the, a million gallons, every million gallons of water that we conserve, that we save, that we reduce, that's a million gallons less of a new supply that we have to try to find and build. The fact that we've spent, you know, over the last almost 30 years that I've been at Aquarian, you know, in a sense, regionalizing access of our water supply through the Southwest Fairfield County Pipeline, that is how we're dealing with the increase in terms of development and that sort of thing, shared resource. But in terms of, you know, additional reservoirs per se, or even groundwater, new groundwater supplies, they're hard and tough coming, right? Try to imagine seeking to build a reservoir, another reservoir somewhere in Greenwich. So water conservation is very important, and regionalization of the water supply and making sure that we have efficient distribution of the water that's available. But you recall the number of reservoirs and the, you know, many billions of gallons of water that's available. So it is a finite resource, it's one that's precious for us, and we need to make sure that we use it effectively and efficiently. But right now, in terms of water supply, we are in a good condition. But again, as the communities grow, as more and more development occurs, the issue of water conservation is going to become more and more important. We cannot be wasteful with the supplies that we have.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm sure that the media listening to today's meeting knows what a KPI is, but if anyone's listening and doesn't know, it's a key performance index.
Indicator.
Indicator. Well, there, there you go. I did.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thanks again, George. Thanks, thanks, Sam. Okay, we will go on to the last two items, I know we're fighting a clock right now, I have to be somewhere, so I'm going to try my best to move this along. We have the presentation of the 2021 Resident Satisfaction Survey with Great Blue Research Incorporated, CEO Michael Vigent, and Project Manager Taylor Foss, and Senior Policy Man Management Analyst Dan Carlson again. So good morning, Taylor, and Michael, and Dan again.
All right, good morning. I know, in the interest of time, I know we're trying to speed things along here, so I just wanted to introduce Great Blue real fast. We'll have Michael Vigent, the CEO of Great Blue Research, providing us with the presentation along with Taylor Foss for the 2021 Residential Satisfaction Survey. And Michael, as stated, we are running a little bit short on time, so feel free to make it concise. One of the benefits is we do have this same presentation pre-recorded, and this will be published on the town webpage. So we, anybody who's interested to watch this again, we will have this posted, and the full Resident Satisfaction Survey will be published on the town website today along with the press release. And with that, I give it to Michael at Great Blue Research.
Great, thank you, Dan, and appreciate all of your help, and Ben's as well, as we've gone through this process. First Selectman, don't worry about it, I knew you were on a timeline, so I will keep this quick. And I also, I also know, as Dan had mentioned, that we had recorded, so I dive into pretty good depth in the recording about the, about the study. So I'll just give it a, you know, a real quick overview. Great Blue's been around for a long time, we work with municipalities, utilities, healthcare organizations all across the country, and our main goal is to make sure that when we provide you with information, it is useful information. And so we'll talk quite a bit about that today. As I mentioned, we'll, we'll keep this short and sweet. I am going to spend a minute on this slide because it's, it's real important to understand, as George, and I always love George's energy, as George explained, kind of the world is changing from an environmental standpoint, from a research standpoint, the world has changed dramatically since the beginning, or since, since COVID really kicked off. And so I'm here to give you a real quick overview on the, the, you know, the municipal study that we did among your residents. This is the fourth time that we've conducted this study for you. So the first time was, was back in 2014, followed by tracking studies in '16 and '18. And while we were supposed to conduct the, the follow-up in 2020, we put that on hold, and I think it was a good reason and a good thing to do so, we put that on hold and conducted the study this year, in, or last year in 2021. So as, as Dan had mentioned earlier, everything's ready for launch and distribution, it will be posted on your website. Again, there is a recording that will take you slower through this presentation and provide a bit more depth. But I think the big thing that's important to understand is, is survey methodology has changed dramatically since the start of COVID. No real surprise, as I explain to you the reasons why, the primary ones of which is in telephone technology, there are more and more technology that is preventing phone calls from coming in to your home and into your cellphone. We work heavily with the technology providers so that we can still get through to homes so that we can capture all different demographics. But since the beginning of COVID, to just give you a real quick example, in 2019 or '18, when we conducted your study for you, 1 in 51 phone calls resulted in a completed survey. In 2021, that number moved to 1 in 247. So more than 200 phone calls to complete one survey. The good news here is that we've also seen a very proportionally solid mix of residents and businesses, demographically speaking, that will now respond to a digital survey. So we did a mix of digital and phone survey in this, in this survey. We did that back in 2018 as well, but the, the volume of, of digital surveys increased slightly this year, but we went through best practice, industry-accepted waiting practices, and made sure that what we present to you today is an apples-to-apples comparison. And really what we work on from a, from a demographic standpoint is really And really what we work on from a, from a demographic standpoint is really making sure that zip code, income level, ethnicity and gender are all being accounted for. So this audience that we spoke to in 2021 compared against your 2018 audience are, like I said, apples-to-apples. So from, from that standpoint, the goal here is, is always making sure that the data helps you as a, as a town make better decisions about what you're going to do and how you're going to proceed. So the second key important factor here is that while you will see across many of the services, the numbers appear to be down a percentage point or two here and there. What I'm going to ask and really recommend is that this 2021 survey really gets viewed as a new benchmark for all of the reasons I just described. And it's not because numbers went down. It's just because the industry has changed and, and methodologies have changed. And this is a recommendation that we are making to folks across the country. The trends that you're going to see today, we're seeing across the country. And we are seeing fewer and fewer folks move on with phone and, and move to a predominantly digital methodology. But we're still having that phone intact for folks that aren't going to respond to mostly your, your elderly population who still want to have the opportunity to speak to someone. So we make sure that that's taken care of for you as well. So I'll jump right into it. And, and as we get into this, what you're going to see is you look at kind of the, the bars here. This really represents 2014, 16, 18 and 2021 respectively. The gray bars on the right side of the screen are those 2021 numbers. And, and what we really found when we dug into this data was that 2018 was really an outlier year. And as you look at the 14, 16 and 21 data sets, you're going to see a lot of consistencies across the board. So in each of these presentation slides, the first slide in a particular section, in this section, it's general satisfaction. The first slide represents the four-year run. And then in the, in the slide that follows, we show you the digital as compared to the phone breakdown of these data sets. So this was a one to seven score with, with one being extremely satisfied. I'm sorry, seven being extremely satisfied and one being extremely dissatisfied or not at all satisfied. So these are mean scores. So whether you're five and a half or six and a half, these are strong numbers to begin with. But I also just wanted to bring reference to what we are seeing. In the phone versus digital, for those same four that we were just talking about, you see a slightly lower percentage of, of ratings for digital as opposed to phone. And in many industry studies on this nature, where that basically boils down to is, is your older demographics who are a little more stable, have been around longer, you know, have, have seen the growth and development of your community, have been longtime residents. They're in a bit more stable position than some of your younger residents who are just getting started out. And expectations with younger audiences, in particular digital audience, are a little higher. So we're seeing a better representation of your community as, as you see in the digital. But they have different expectations. So once again, we're, we're really recommending that you're viewing these new ratings from 2021 as a new benchmark as opposed to really a tracking study. It doesn't disclude or exclude any of the, the issues that we talked about from a tracking standpoint. There's still lots of consistencies, but again, we just want to make sure that folks aren't getting too hung up on, on declines, but really viewing it as a, as a, as a new, a new benchmark. So importance of service departments, again, across the board, building, planning, zoning, highway, parks and rec, inland, we see, we see strong numbers across the board. Three out of the four of these, you're, you're seeing at or, or above what we saw in, you know, in 2016, similar to what we saw in some of the 2019 ratings. When we break down some of these categories, this is once again a phone versus digital, seven being your best rating, one being your lowest rating. What you're really looking for in these categories is, is lots of greens and blues, kind of those top three bars of the seven, if you will. Not a lot of variance, a little bit for these five departments across the board in those seven, six and five responses, but pretty strong. What we, what we're really looking for here is that there, there is minimal amounts of reds and grays. And that's exactly what we have here. Building Inspection Division, again, three out of four areas here, we saw increases over, you know, one increase in 2016, or we saw some, some increases. We even saw some, you know, in 2016 over that 2018 number. But again, you're seeing general movement in the right direction. And we're talking about the Building Inspection Division. And also, listen, we know that from an information standpoint, that one rating at 3.83, we know this is a group that really got slammed during COVID with, with everyone wanting to build or improve upon while they were stuck at home. So some of these, as you think about what's happening at the time of the survey, it makes sense that there's a lot going on. So we start to break that down. In the, in, in the phone versus online, you start to see a little bit more variance in, in the greens and the blues. But they're still making up the, the predominant numbers and ratings, if you will, on these areas. Information, that's where, again, based on my previous point, smaller numbers in the greens and blues, but largely because that's a, that's a group that, that got, got a bit overwhelmed and, and saw a lot of volume through the, through the pandemic. Planning and zoning department increased over 2018 in, in the help side of the equation. So even though as we were seeing folks asking more and having greater requests, the, the level of service being delivered during those increases of requests, they felt that, that customer service element, information might have been a little tough to get, or they were waiting on things. So in a busy time, we do expect some things to go down, that being the case there. And again, similar, similar responses and things of that nature in the, you know, in the phone versus online. As we continue on to Inland, Wetland and Water Courses Agency, we see three out of the four areas in 2021 showed increases over previous years. But I also want to bring your attention to the end values in parentheses. We're only talking 18 respondents. So one or two people providing a negative rating could, could really throw these percentages off. So things are moving in the right direction and we're only talking small numbers of folks here. But with small numbers of folks, you can see great ratings and you can see ratings that are all over the place. So thankfully, they're in good shape here. We see in terms of assistance, help is really the one big area and accuracy. When we're talking about these interactions, accuracy and help are the most important and, and, and as a result, are resulting in high levels of satisfaction. Highway Division, there was two new questions that we were asking in this, in this current study, frequency and convenience. So, so we won't have numbers to share historically on those. But again, we're seeing those, those mean scores of satisfaction in, in that five to six mark with a couple of time and info showing a little bit lower. We're seeing that variance from phone to, to digital slowing down in this area, getting back to more consistency. And, and although I'm kind of hustling through this presentation, please know that as folks have questions and there's things that pop up, Great Blue is available at no additional charge to, to walk you through and help you understand these numbers at their best. Parks and Rec, we know these folks as well were busy during, during the COVID and during the pandemic as folks wanted to get outside. So we're seeing strong numbers across the board there. And, and you'll see that, that also that consistency in the phone versus online. So regardless of the audience, whether you had kids or you're a little older, that value placed on recreation and passes and getting out and having some, some time outdoors and, and conducting some recreation activities was important. Similar numbers for the recreation sites. So I'll just kind of jump over those quickly. And we'll take you into really kind of our next steps and, and recommendations. So obviously, we presented to the department heads yesterday. So we went through this presentation with them as well. We were just fearful that the audio volume on that recorded wasn't going to show up as well in, in chambers. So that recorded version is available. So it's taking a look at this information as an organization, as a, as a community, uncovering those opportunities for improvement. Our recommendations are really based on my thoughts of, of this being a new benchmark. Now's the time to think about areas for investigation. If you want to add or revise or delete questions or talk about additional town departments, we also nowadays, in from a, from a DNI perspective, gender is no longer just a male, female response in a survey. There's, there's five to seven categories now. So we, we, we actually recommend that in your next survey to include the, the variety of responses that are available so that it's just more inclusive and folks have the opportunity to provide that response that best reflects how they identify. It, it removes one year's worth of, of comparability data, but that's a, that's a good one to have. And then last but not least, from a fielding methodology standpoint, we have in-house at Great Blue, a wide variety of methodologies, whether it's online digital survey, interactive voice response technology, where if folks wanted to actually make a phone call and go through a voice automated survey, they can. Email distribution, text, postcard mailers are coming back with QR codes like you've seen in restaurants. Hub your phone over and you can see the, the questions and, and be active in that survey. And then the next Resident Satisfaction Survey is, is considered to be conducted in the fall of 2023 with a fielding date to start in October 1st. So I tried to keep this short and sweet for you and I appreciate your attention and hustling through. But, but first, selectmen, I wanted to be very mindful of, of your schedule. And, but I am available to answer any questions that folks have at this point in time.
Michael, thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate you getting through that quickly because I do have to step out in a couple of minutes. But, um, yeah, and this was a, a lot of work went into it and it's not as bad as I know with the, during the pandemic, people were home and weren't working. And I know that Parks and Recreation alone, I think they fielded 83,000 phone calls between March and September of that year. So, you know, motions were high and I guess all over the country, these surveys came back very similar. But I think there's some good, some good information in here. You know, you could see where we're, we're doing well. And then I think on the information side, I think the town's got to step up a little bit because that seemed to be pretty consistent throughout your, your survey.
Yeah, and I would say, I just sorry to interrupt. I would say the one thing on information is I think the expectation for information has changed. Two years ago, we weren't doing this kind of, of presentation or meeting. It was in person. Two years ago, we weren't as tuned into digital communications. And as the pandemic hit, we got bombarded with emails and texts and video calls and those sorts of things. So it really has been the expectation has changed. And in those large volume scenarios, the, or the communication and the delivery of information is going to slow. And that's logical. So it's just, it's understanding that and, and making adjustments. How do we handle and how do we adapt to those, those busier times and those, those, those expectation changes?
Well, thank you. Yeah, that's certainly important to consider. So no, but thank you. I think this was very helpful and I know our department heads and all our department employees will certainly be going over all the data and seeing where we can improve and keep moving the ball down the field. So I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your business and we're always available for questions as needed. If you think of something after today's call, and again, there's no additional charge for that. We're here at, at your, at your need.
Yeah, we will be following up. That's for sure. I really appreciate it. I don't know if Lauren or Janet had any, any comments.
No, just thanks for the data and I'll look forward to getting the deeper dive in the recording. I also want to say thank you and likewise, I'll, I'll look forward to watching the presentation. I did want to just clarify though, this, this survey was based entirely on phone calls and not, I know that the Parks and Rec email list is something like 19,000 residences in town, which is almost all of our residences in town. So I just wanted to clarify that this, this round did not use those emails to contact people?
I do not believe so. Dan Quattruccielli, who is our, our project leader on that, actually just had a baby. And so he's home with his new child. I can confirm that unless, Dan, you happen to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I will say that the email list for distribution was not utilized in this. We did some publication through some press releases as well as some other publication on our webpage and, and had the link there going forward as during the recommendations. Now that this is more digital facing, we're going to be looking to utilize a much more specific outreach probably in the, in the next go around there for you. So.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that.
Thanks again, Dan and Michael and everybody who helped with this. That's very important and we'll certainly be proudly reaching back to you with some more questions and follow-ups, Michael.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank, thank you. Stay safe.
You as well.
Thank you. Okay, that was informative and we just have one more issue. It is just to consideration of a maintenance agreement and an encroachment permit regarding Cardinal Stadium. We have Abby with us.
Good morning. I'll, I'll keep this brief. I also have Sean O'Keefe and Dan Watson to answer any questions on the project itself. But I'd just like to address the maintenance agreement and the associated encroachment permit, which has been presented to the town by the state and will be required so that Cardinal Stadium could move on with the project. The Cardinal Stadium project includes a reconfiguration or in rebuilding of an access road and associated plantings. That part of the project will encroach onto state property on Route 1. So therefore, this maintenance agreement and encroachment permit will be needed. The agreement is non-negotiable. The town signed a, the same or very similar agreement in 2018 regarding a sewer encroachment. We tried to negotiate it with the state then, and I try to negotiate it now. The terms are non-negotiable. The reason I, I bring this up is there is an indemnification clause in the permit and the maintenance agreement. Generally, as you know, by town charter, the town doesn't indemnify other parties. In this case, because we have no choice, it is being recommended we sign the agreement as is so the project can move forward. And we will be getting insurance, which will be dollar one insurance to cover the exposure from taking over this piece of property. The other point I want to make is this goes on, you know, theoretically until it's terminated. So every year, we would need to get an appropriation for that insurance policy. And it would go on from there. So I could answer any questions on the maintenance agreement or the permit. If you have questions about the project or what's exactly being done, Dan can answer those.
Okay, thanks, Abby. Any questions for Abby or Dan?
Well, I just want to say thank you. I absolutely want to support the Cardinal Stadium project. I did reach out in anticipation of this agenda item. I reached out to people who are much smarter than I am about these things. And it was suggested I ask, and this is, this is kind of just standard, what work is planned and will it be in compliance with the standards of the state so that we don't reach the agreement or incur unexpected expenses? Is this an area of property that we are already maintaining or is it a new area that we haven't maintained? How might this impact any additional work planned for the stadium, including building a new egress onto the post road? And as a matter of town governance, is the BOE or DPW responsible for ensuring that we fulfill our obligations under the agreement?
Okay. Well, for the last point, the town is being asked to sign the agreement. So I would say it is, you know, the town in this case. Of course, it's a BOE project, so they'd have a part in it. In terms of the actual, the other questions, Dan, are you able to address those? Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dan Watson, Board of Ed, Director of Facilities. The work is, as Abby put it, is pretty limited to a small sliver of property that the Board of Ed and the town already maintains. We're adding to it. We are modifying, or when we rip out sidewalks and we are replacing them, they'll be per the state codes. There'll also be ADA accessible ramps at all curb cuts. We will be doing some additional planting alongside of the hill. We'll be adding correct signage in and out of the property at those locations. It'll be right turn in, right turn out. And that's about it. And that's about it. It's, we already maintain the property as it is. We're just making some changes to it to allow vehicular traffic into the property.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Do you have, I know, is this a first read, my colleagues?
It is.
Okay.
Can I just talk about the timing?
Sure.
Of it? I hadn't thought about the first read. This has already been submitted to the RTM for their April meeting because it is holding up the project. So tonight, we'll be going before the BET to get their approval. I don't know when the next Board of Selectmen meeting is, but I would, you know, recommend that it be considered at this meeting if possible.
Yeah, thanks to me, it won't happen in time. Because I have a trip, an unexpected trip. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can you just send a link to the project? You described it, but just in case we get questions.
Yeah, that would be great. And I know these encroachment permits are with the state, so certainly, you know, I know the times of the essence, so it looks like, you know, if we're already maintaining this anyway, and it needs to go forward, I'm happy to put it up for a vote now if there's a motion.
Okay, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the maintenance agreement, 12 dot 22 dash oh one, 21 in parentheses, and encroachment permit for Cardinal Stadium.
And given that we are going to put this forward to the RTM, I'm comfortable foregoing the second read, so I will second that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks, Abby, and thanks, Dan. Thanks to everybody who worked on this, and we'll get that over to the RTM. Seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Please wait, please wait, Fred.
Okay, hi, Margaret.
So sorry, you guys, just jumping in really quickly. I had had my hand up before you voted. Megan is aware of this. You are going to get a very similar proposal and request, hopefully in June, possibly in September, from Planning and Zoning in regarding to the tree planting on the post road, which the Board of Selectmen approved. When did we do that, Fred? 2020?
Yes.
June of 2020, I believe. The Board of Selectmen approved our tree planting plan, and we are finally getting to the point where unless we conquer the same issue with the encroachment permit, not only can we not add the trees that are being proposed in the plan that y'all approved, but any tree that is removed cannot be replaced. So you're going to see the same thing. This is an ongoing thing that DPW has to deal with every time they do work in the DOT right-of-way. They have had to get this insurance coverage. Megan has actually priced our insurance coverage for this indemnification, and unless it changes, and I'll caveat that, it would be $233 a year, at least in the first year. But again, we're going to come forward to you, Board of Selectmen and RTM, and ask you for the same consideration because we can't go forward unless the RTM and the Board of Selectmen agree. Right now, we're hoping to get 380 trees into the post road in about 10 years. No incremental cost to the town, Greenwich Conservancy paying. You'll hear more, but I'm just giving you the heads up. I wanted to warn you before you voted, this is gonna, this issue just doesn't go away because the DOT does not want anything done in their right-of-way without indemnification. So it's an ongoing problem for the town.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I remember that conversation and others where it gets really, you know, what seems to be very, very simple, becomes, you know, controversial and certainly raises concerns from people. So I do remember that and some other ones with the state. So thanks for getting that out.
And I know that Janet's completely on board. We've been talking about heat island effect and carbon sequestration. The post road is where you would have the greatest impact for both of those. And we're stymied because our charter doesn't allow the town to take on an unknown liability, and the DOT refuses to work. I know you know that. I've been talking to U.S. about it since 2019. It's a pain, but here we are. I just wanted to let you know. So thanks for letting me talk before you guys go home for lunch.
Thank you so much, Margarita. Appreciate you getting that out there.
Fred, I know you have to run. I'm really sorry. This is Megan Demato, the Director of Risk Management. If there's any questions on the insurance or the charter or any of those things, I'm happy to answer them offline if anybody wants to know about it. I've been involved in the Route 1 project, the sewer project, the MMA project, the, this one, the Cardinal Stadium. And I told the BET I may put together a spreadsheet so that we can look at what is this costing the town to get these policies? And should we consider possibly allowing to sign off on state agreements? So that's something that the town has to consider. It's a much longer conversation than just, you know, a few minutes. So, but I'll get something together so that we can look at that as a whole and make a good decision as a town.
Yes, maybe we should set something up maybe next week to get that conversation going. I know it's a longer conversation and certainly not for here, but appreciate that. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn for the day?
Just before we do, Fred, the only thing we need to decide, I'm going to have a conflict with our April 14th Board of Selectmen meeting, so we're going to be huddling to figure out when we could reschedule it.
Okay, yeah, well, we could do that. I'll be back. I think we have a meeting later on this afternoon, so we can figure it out and then reach out to everybody and see what works for them.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
So I motion that we adjourn our meeting.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks, everybody, for who attended virtually and in person, and thanks, Barbara and Jenny, as always, and we'll see you around Town Hall. Thanks.
Thank you.